Okay, we'd like to open Mahoney County Commissioners Meeting Number Eighteen, Thursday, May the 11th. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. Good morning. All right. Welcome. Nice, beautiful day out there. We should all be home cutting our grass, relaxing.
No grass.
Audrey's back from the Nation of Texas, getting us up to date on all of our computer skills. All right, I'd like to open the meeting with public comments. If anyone has any public comments, let me ask you to come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and address the board. Okay, seeing no one, move on to Approval of Previous Minutes of Board Meeting Number Seventeen from Thursday, May the 4th, 2023, and Approval of Bills for Payment. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusson?
Yes. Advertisement for Bids, San Terry.
Hey, you got me, I get the short straw again.
Ah, well, you know, that happens. That happens.
Good morning, everybody. This is a bid for sanitary for janitorial services at the Engineering Department Business Office.
Okay, thank you. Motion for Advertisement for Bids.
Motion to approve Advertisement for Bids, Number One.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusson?
Yes, Journal Interest.
Motion to approve Journal Interest, Number One.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusson?
Yes. Agreements, Engineers.
A is an agreement with Greenwood Chevrolet for Repair Star Vehicle Number Thirty-Five in the estimated amount of $3,117.22. B is an agreement with Truck Specialists Incorporated in terms of two of our Western Star Forty-Seven Exxon trucks in the estimated amount of $12,183.74. It's both non-general.
Okay, thanks, Ray. Jobs and Family.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning. Audrey, Nancy, and Jim. Let her see Job and Family Services as a sub-grant agreement with Juvenile Justice Center for the 2023 Ten of Summer Youth Program in the amount of $1 million, non-general.
Thank you. Lead-based, Phil. All right, are you up there, Phil? Fell asleep.
He's connecting.
He's trying to connect.
Phil is connecting to audio. All right, Phil, we found you. What, that's Heinz Ward, that's not Phil.
Unmute yourself, Phil.
Come on, Phil.
You're up.
How you doing? Sorry about that.
We're doing good now that we've connected with you, Phil.
My goodness, I've been in here for ten minutes, fifteen minutes, and I...
It takes me that long to get the computer on sometimes, too, Phil, it's okay.
You're exaggerating.
Are we, uh, are we in the process of this?
Yes, you're up, Phil. Lead-based, D, E, and F.
Okay, uh, we have an agreement with the City of Warren. We do, uh, we chip in Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes work to some of their projects, and they give us back match money, in-kind match money. In D, that's with the City of Warren for Healthy Homes Lead Hazard Control work. Actually, that's for the Healthy Homes portion, we split them up this year. And E is with the City of Warren for the Lead portion. We give up to $10,000, and beyond that, we use as match. And F is an agreement with DIS construction for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes work at Forty-four Nineteen Howard in the amount of $13,375, all non-general.
All right, thank you, Phil. Risk Management. All right, I don't...
I'm taking it for Kathy.
Oh, okay, thanks, Jim.
This is Amendment Number One with Youngstown State University to extend the ADA Transitional Plan until September 30th, 23. No change in amount. This is to provide sufficient time to evaluate the needs for ADA compliance of our various facilities.
All right, thanks, Jim. Welcome back. How was your vacation?
Too much rain.
Yeah, it was a bad week to take.
Yes, I tried riding my bicycle, but afraid of going too fast and hitting those brakes.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, those narrow tires, it's tough. It's also tough because they haven't swept the roads in a lot of areas, so depending on where you're riding.
I tried to do a bike trail.
Trail, yeah. Do you get down by my house?
I do, but I like the other end, only because there's a lot of seams going north, where if you're going south, it's a lot smoother. So going north, about every fifty feet, there's a bump.
Yeah.
So...
We're trying to get the park to spend some of that deer-killing money on fixing the cracks in the bike path.
Thank you, then I'll rollerblade past your house.
Ooh, man.
Rollerblade.
Can you do that?
I do.
Oh, my, God bless you. You know, I'd feel like, you know, on my way to be going forward, and my feet wouldn't catch up with me, and I'd smash it on my face. Yeah, do they have training wheels for those?
Not that I've seen.
God bless you, Jim, I'm telling you. See, that's what you can do, the things you can do when you stay fit and in shape.
Right, you have to stay focused, that you can do. Because if you start thinking you're too old, then you get yourself in a rut.
You know what, I paint the house, I climb ladders, you know, and, but I don't get on two wheels too often anymore. I'm selling my motorcycle, too.
Smart move.
All right, well, a motion to approve Agreements.
Motion to approve Agreements, A through G.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusson?
Yes. Record of Bids, Lead-based, Phil.
We have a record of bids for our Lead Certification Training Provider.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve Resolution, Record of Bids, Number One.
A. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Commissioners, Resolutions, O M B.
Commissioners, item A is a resolution approving the agreement expenditures with the following to assist with COVID-19 public health and fund it by ARPA in the amount of $400,000. This is for the Fire Chiefs Association. We do have...
Andy?
Andy here.
I'm surprised Audrey didn't cut it to $40,000 once she read it off, you know, she has a tendency to move that investment.
He would want me to put that zero in another place, but...
So Andy, why don't you give us a little insight of what we decided to do with the allocations here?
Sure, absolutely. So one of the big problems that we've had in our service and in private EMS was during COVID and after COVID, nobody wanted to enter the field. Just the pay wasn't enough, and the job being in the homes of COVID-positive patients caused us a big shortage on firefighting and EMS side of things. So what we're asking for was the money so that we could give scholarships for folks that want to get back into the business and try to recruit young people back in. So again, we're all in dire straits, whether it be private or public sector, so we feel this money will actually help us get people back into the field and get us back up to the employment levels that we all need.
And the intent of this is for individuals that may want to become paramedics or EMTs or firefighters can utilize this and apply for the grant from this $400,000 pool to go to school to become certified so that they can, you know, look for jobs in the field.
Correct, so what we're gonna do is through the Mahoney County Fire Chiefs Association, people will apply, and as long as they are a Mahoney County resident or going to a educational facility within Mahoney County, as long as they give a commitment to stay with Mahoney County and get that service, provide that service, we'll pay for paramedic and EMT schools for them. So they, you know, they could be just coming out of high school wanting to get into the field, and they don't have to be associated with anybody, as long as they're a resident, then they'll be able to receive the funding.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
You know, Andy, I see where Schoffin is putting that on as well now. They're gonna have a class.
Yeah, they've actually, they've had classes in the past. So again, we're hoping this will boost their enrollment as well.
They changed a lot of things there that it's really gonna be good for the residents.
It is, it'll be great, and I think this will be a huge help. We've already, there's already been rumblings of this, and our classes are actually, the numbers are doubled what they were last year. We believe it's just from hearing, maybe the potential of this funding, so we think it'll do a lot of good, and actually, we're sure, it's gonna benefit the whole entire county.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, did you want to tell people how they could get access or contract?
Yes, so we'll actually put it out further. This was the next step. There is actually is a contract to sign through the Mahoney County Fire Chiefs Association, which is just about developed, so we'll put it out in the public as to what number they can call. It hasn't exactly been defined, but we will have that done by the end of this week.
And we'll make sure we put it on the county page.
Absolutely, yes, and if it's okay, we'd like to come back to a meeting to announce how to do that, if that's okay in the following years. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy, appreciate you being here.
I also wanted to, Anna's picture's not on there, but Anna and Mark worked very hard on getting this, all the paperwork done, going back and forth between the fire association. There she goes.
Anna and Mark and Audrey as well, it's just been a tremendous help.
Especially those two, I appreciate all their help in getting this through, got it over the line. Okay, item B is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the following township and county engineer for the allocation of road and infrastructure sales tax project in the amount of $49,995, and this is in Milton Township. This will be our first township to get the road tax on that's going on without going into a county engineer project, so I'm kind of good excited. It's starting to roll, we do have some other applications that are pending that will be coming forward soon.
Excellent.
Item C is a resolution approving the transfer of funds from the American Rescue Fund Standard Allowance Revenue Replacement to the General Fund in the amount of $1,326,1,032,6,134.
Knew I shouldn't have done that one myself.
That is part of the $10 million allowance, it's just within that, we're just moving it over to the General Fund, and it still will be used for things like that. Item D is a resolution fixing time, place, a review, final hearing, and notice of proposed petition to vacate a part of California Avenue in Boardman Township. And item E is a resolution approving the petition in Enterprise Zone Amendment to Include Smith Township to the Village of Sebring Enterprise Zone, and I do have Sarah here that can speak on that.
Yes, Sarah, you want to give us a little insight on the Enterprise Zone, how that works?
Yes, insight, good morning Commissioners, Nancy, Audrey, Jim. We had a business that wants to do a substantial expansion in Smith Township, and they were not in the Enterprise Zone, however, they were eligible based on economic need in their census tract. So this was an application that will be forwarded to the state upon your approval so that we can establish that Enterprise Zone in the township just beyond the Village of Sebring and enable the creation of new jobs and expansion of a business, so I thank you for that.
It just gives them the authority to apply for different opportunities through, you know, funding and funding sources and, you know, relief in some of the different areas, because I remember when we did it in Austintown a hundred years ago, when you were, I'm not sure who you were working with then, but you assisted us then as well.
The county?
Yeah, county, that's right.
That's right. We were all babies then.
Yeah, but we actually encompassed the entire township as an Enterprise Zone so that we could provide opportunity anywhere in Austintown at that time. Okay, thank you. Move on to F, Human Resources.
Morning, everyone. This is a resolution approving two revisions to the county's Personnel Manual. One is for employee driving record, and the other one is for county property and vehicles. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Jobs and Family. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, JJC, not Jobs and Family, I almost passed you right by there.
I'm not used to being in person.
I'm telling you.
It's nice to see everybody. This is a resolution of necessity to purchase three new vehicles through the state purchasing. The juvenile court fleet is over ten years old, and we use them for probation intake, transporting children all across the state, so we're asking for that, it's 88635, General Fund.
Excellent, thanks, Jim. Jobs and Family, now.
Good morning, Job and Family Service, this is the resolution approving the appointment of two customer inquiry support specialists for the Child Support Division.
Thank you. Lead-based, Phil.
This is a resolution for a moral obligation to AK Water Works in the amount of $1,900 for emergency work for an eighty-seven-and-a-half Madison, the lateral sanitary line that we had fixed previously ran through the front house and was compromised in the front house and ruined what we did in the first place, so we had to go back and fix through the front house of on Madison there. And J is a moral obligation for 53089 to Mancell Heating and Cooling for emergency repairs at the same place, kind of peripheral to the lateral line being moved, we had to do some things to the furnace, so.
Thanks, Phil. Sheriff, O M B, Joe.
Good morning, everyone. K is a resolution supportive of an application to the Ohio Attorney General's Office for the 2023-2024 Children Abuse Prevention Program with a DARE grant in the amount of $23,030, and that's with a 50% cash match required by Jackson Middle School District.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Resolutions.
Motion to approve Resolutions, A through K.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy Agueda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So we have one resolution and six people we're gonna give it to, so.
Thank you, pass it around. One week you have it, one week you have it, one week Struthers, the mayor of Struthers, then we'll move it around.
So actually, in recognition of the Week of Hope, Mental Health, Children, we have, you know, JJC involved, we have the Mental Health Board involved, we have Kat Shercon Miller, the mayor of Struthers, involved, she's part of the Hope Foundation as well as very involved in all the same issues to try and, you know, bring more focus and assistance with respect to that, so we'd ask both Jen and Dwayne to come up, and we will like to give them this proclamation. I know, I don't know how long we've been doing this specifically.
Every year.
For how many years?
How many years, Nancy?
Yeah. But, you know, and all of the work that your departments do and the assistance for the people that you serve in Mahoney County and the whole valley, really, we thank you for your dedication and service, you, Judge Delik, and Jen, and Kat Shercon, Mayor, I'm the Struthers Mayor, Kat Shercon, so.
Thank you.
Several years ago, Juvenile Court of Mental Health decided to make Mahoney County a trauma-informed care county, working closely with the HO Department of Mental Health Recovery, and we had trainings that seemed to go on forever, but at the end of the day, what we wanted was that, you know, instead of asking people what's wrong with them, asking people what happened to them. And simply, it's the golden rule on Sturworts, treat others how you want to treat it, take a breath before you react, and we need that more now than ever, so we're happy to do this and just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Excellent, John. Your department, Judge Delik?
Yeah, on behalf of Judge Delik, thank you, and as a city resident of Struthers, I'll thank you on behalf of Kat, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you guys all take a picture? Do you all want to take a picture?
You gotta start getting Nancy in these pictures.
I don't think so.
Everybody's just like, fighting for the bid to Jack.
Okay, well, with that said, ask if anybody has any comments, any department heads, any electeds, anything to fill us in. I see there, Phil. Give us some insight, Phil.
I just want to show you my own moral obligation.
Oh, look at that.
I got a new grandson.
Is that Heinz Ward Jr.?
He looks like he got the hands for it.
I'm telling you, he's got the head for it, too.
We got the same head.
Yeah.
He got more hair, but my new grandson.
My brother just had a baby last night.
This has been a full month, Jim Romeos, my daughter had a baby last night, too.
Careful, it's contagious.
Be a happy front page. Was it a full moon last night?
Yeah, must have been, well, congratulations to everybody.
May 5th was a full moon.
That's fantastic. All right, well, anyone else?
Yes, Commissioners, I'm sure you guys are all aware that the feds have all the states disenrolling people on the Medicaid program during the PHE time, people were allowed to stay on, so it's a national, feds are removing, so you guys will probably get that through your Commissioners Association, but we are working at JFS diligently to determine correct eligibility, so we may be getting a lot of calls, we're doing a lot of overtime in order to get through all of the applications, and it's a federal mandate that COVID is basically over, so they want us to go back where at one time we could not remove anyone off the medical, now we have to, if they're not eligible. Now, that's a highlight of JFS, we're busy putting on those renewals.
Carol, Andy?
No, I just think that we're looking at a lot of things, and I know Dave will explain this more, to set up costs for everybody in the state of Ohio with another election in August. I think this is the craziest I've ever seen this government, whether it's federal, state, and sometimes even county, city, whatever. I have no clue what's happened to everybody, I don't care where you stand, Democrat, Republican, NP, whatever, it's just crazy that we're not seeing somebody make sense of just giving the people the right. I don't understand what's going on in this country. I think hopefully this cycle goes into its four- or five-year period and then reverts back to normal, I'm just hoping that, but I don't see it in the near future, and it seems like every time you open the newspaper, it's crazy, everything's crazy, and I don't know what turned people on, I don't know what, maybe they're drinking bad water.
And Carol, the bad part about it is they're mandating, it's a mandate, that we go through these applications and hurriedly get people off of the medical program, and with the food stamps, you were aware of that, that was months ago, so now it's the medical.
So what... And that, again, is sad, because you have families that were getting, maybe they were used to the $100 a month, and then through COVID, they may have gotten $250. Well, they say, well, you worked, you were able to work a program with your family for $100, well, guess what? Through COVID, all the prices went up. They didn't reduce the prices when COVID was, when the supply chains, they said, ah, we'll leave them there. So who do they hurt? They're not only hurting those people, but all the residents all over the United States. And, I mean, these are topics we could have a town hall meeting and discuss forever, and I would think we should do that, so that we could show who the hell really puts these rules and resolutions and legislative packages in play, which is not the county. So anyway, have a nice weekend, God willing, it'll be beautiful, and I don't want, I'll let these guys finish up. Take care, congratulations, Dwayne, and Jen, and the Judge Delik, and Mayor Shercon Miller for bringing it to us, and Sarah for the Enterprise Zone. I think it's good to hear that coming from places like Smith Township and Sebring, because, I don't know, we go to the mansion in Sebring for that Fire Chiefs thing, and that place is the best-kept secret, beautiful. I'm done. And Andy, thank you. I said one other word.
Anthony?
Yeah, just congratulations on the new grandbabies.
Oh, my.
That's amazing. Beautiful, beautiful. Andy, thank you for getting all of this organized with our staff and working, you know, with everybody in the community. You know, you hear so much today about how taxed we are with respect to ambulance service, having qualified EMTs and paramedics, that you could revive or save a life between the time the ambulance arrives and getting them to the hospital. My neighbor's son is actually enrolled in the program, and he, young Aaron, and he wants to be an EMT and a paramedic. His dad was a firefighter, and he died of brain cancer a few years ago, so I kind of did a little mentoring with Aaron, he always comes over to me and would talk to him, and I was with his mother the other day, and she said he's doing very, very well. So appreciate all that you've done with the Fire Chiefs, and Carol and Dave, you know, they're writing out what's happening with this constitutional thing. You know, one of the things you want to be careful, you know, in our society, in our Constitution, is trying to game the system, to gain an unfair edge with respect to a majority-minority vote, and I think gaming the system like that is quite dangerous, but again, like Carol said, you're gonna add another election, it's gonna be another expense, and I'd love to see more of these types of things start happening down the road, for what reason, I have no idea. With that being said, I want to thank everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I continue to get on my soapbox, it doesn't go very far, but, you know, it, you know, it's frustrating, and, you know, one thing that I've always been happy to say is that it doesn't matter if I served just Austintown or Mahoney County, I never fear my tug or my position, because I always feel that I'm gonna do the right thing on behalf of the people I represent regardless of the repercussions in an election. You know, I'll never compromise what I believe in and what I believe is right for the sake of, you know, gaining position. So it's disheartening, and I'm gonna paraphrase and read a little statement that was put out, some of it, anyway. You know, we really don't all realize that the reason behind a second election coming in August, why we're spending $20 million to put an August election on, we have a November election. You know, so, but the Republican supermajority in the House Legislature has taken yet another extreme step today, voting to make it more difficult for the citizens of Ohio to amend the state constitution. It's a deliberate attempt to undercut a reproductive freedom ballot initiative expected to appear on the November ballot this fall. The truth is, the... The truth is, the, that this cynical, anti-democratic tactic is the only option remaining to the Republicans because they've seen the polling and they know that Ohioans support, the majority of Ohioans support a woman's right to make her own healthcare decisions. So because the polls show 55 to 56% of people think government should stay out of the women's healthcare and that the most extremist abortion law in the United States that forces a 10-year-old raped girl to travel to Indiana to get an abortion and that people can't make their own decisions in their own family. So now what's gonna happen is they're gonna put a ballot initiative on in August that changes the constitution that says there's not one vote for one person. That you have to have 60% of the electorate vote to amend a constitution. Well, maybe we should do that for gun control, right? Maybe we should put that on because we talk about the constitution, right? And the Second Amendment, First Amendment, maybe we should do a freedom of speech, maybe the majority of people don't rule to be able to have freedom of speech. Fourteenth Amendment, why don't we, why don't we go right down the list? You know, so it's sad that today's not an anomaly, but a disturbing trend for which the Republicans impose unpopular policies on the public and then wield their power at the state to insulate themselves from meeting the judgment of the voters. We've seen it before in gerrymandering the districts, now the, now that results in polit, in politicians, now it results in politicians choosing their voters instead of their voters choosing their politicians. You know, it's, it changing the rules in the middle of the game, neutralizing the last true check held by the people of Ohio to rein in an increasingly unaccountable legislature. You know, when you have a supermajority, you know, power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely. You know, whether it's gerrymandering, the, 75% of the people said we want fair districts and impartial districts. They forced it into a court, they control the courts. So that, that gets neutralized and it never gets implemented. So then the courts aren't all in their favor, so let's take the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court and identify D's and R's so that we can have a better shot at eliminating people with democratic views. You know, it just goes on and on and on and on. And the, even the brand new legislators, you know, in, in different counties have, have just done in March step. So, you know, just, you know, all of that money spent and we can't get an ambulance to, to pick up, uh, an elderly person that needs help or needs assistance or calls 911. Where's the state legislature with respect to assisting the counties and the local political subdivisions with, with ambulance service? Andy, how many, how many times have you been with Struthers, Louisville, Camel, you know, in those areas that don't have a single ambulance on, on the street to help their communities? But we're gonna spend $20 million to put a, uh, uh, an election on in August. Had to go a long way. $20 million is, is more than, than most, every political subdivision in Mahoney County's annual budget is more than, you know, except obviously the county and the city, you know, but that kind of money, those kind of initiatives, if you have a supermajority, why don't you use it to the good of the people you represent? I would like them to come in here and tell us how this vote and how this election in August is going to im- improve the health, safety and welfare of the residents of Mahoney County. That's all. Come and tell us. God bless Laura McDally. She does. She comes in here and talks to us about it. You know, I want the rest of them to come in here and tell us how this protects the citizens of Mahoney County, how it gets an ambulance to their community, how it helps the EMTs better, uh, get, uh, increase the EMT, uh, field and the pool in Mahoney County. You know, so it's, it's disheartening anymore because, you know, if there's, if the people decide, let's change the decision, decision-making process. You know, and, you know, I, I, I know I'm rambling, but I could speak to it forever and, you know, they can use all the money they want to throw against me and that's fine because, you know, if, if I lose doing the right thing, that's the thing that I'm most responsible for, is protecting the health, safety and welfare of Mahoney County residents. So without going any further, I did wanna say one thing and Carol reminded me, Anthony and Carol and I had the pleasure to go out to, um, to Gabby Camp, uh, in Louisville. You know, talk about people helping people. It's on 422 McCarty Road and we, there's like 50 acres and they're building small, like cabins type scenarios in, in the woods to help, uh, the disabled, you know, to be able to have what we take for granted. You know, the fact that, that they can't go on a vacation and sit by the lake and they can't, uh, they, they can't go places where somebody can, you know, have a facility that encompasses their special needs. And just go out there and, and look at it. It's a lake and small cabins, handicap accessible. They've got, oh my God, so many animals, the things that we saw out there.
There we go, eggs.
Yeah, eggs.
God, God bless Jimmy Sutman, the purple cat and, and Golden String and so many other groups that do things like they do, but, you know, he's, you know, to use Duane's word, his is on steroids, you know, and, and, you know, it's really, um, you know, when you go and you see things like that, you know, spend the money, you know, from the state helping people. You know, we, we talk about mental health issues being the number one concern and once again, the state legislature just this week, uh, they eliminated, they, they voted no on more assistance in mental health. You know, so we used to have a Woodside Receiving Hospital in, in Mahoney County that helped a lot of people. Today we talk about mental health issues being, you know, the number one concern. Jerry Green tells us that 60 to 70% of the people in the jail are, are in the jail because of mental health issues. So, you know, we have a lot of needs in the state, uh, having a new election definitely is not one of them.
Waste of money.
So, I'll, I'll stop.
Taxpayers' money. Period.
All right, well, that being said, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Emi, do I get it?
Yes.
Ms. Chaka, can't you?
Yes.
Ms. I just.